All right, it's July 5th, 2022, 7:30 PM. Going to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, myself, John Teahan. George, Andy Marco, Rebecca Sanoski. I didn't see Doug yet. I'm not sure whether he just popped on or not, but.
I'm here.
Okay, so Doug's here, and Joe Hall won't be attending tonight. All right, so let's see. No applications to receive tonight. Item D, public hearing. PZ-22-9, text amendment application pertaining to the regulation of cannabis applicant. Planning and zoning commission continued from June 7th. So before we start taking public comments, any comments, Mike, or anything from the commission?
The only thing that I'll add that came in between the last meeting and now is there were some comments that were provided through the town website to us, which were in the agenda link. I think it was either three or four folks that were in support of the regulation as written. I can go through those if you guys didn't see them, but that's the only thing that I added.
I did not see them.
You want me to?
Yes, please, yeah.
Let's see. Okay. So I put them in, should be in there as a PDF, but I'll just read them. Or actually, I can share them if you want. All right. First one is from someone by the name of, gentleman by the name of Josh Hannan. Hello, I just wanted to share my support for the cannabis regulation that was presented at PCC meeting this week. I think they're reasonable and hope we can proceed with them. Thanks, Josh. I was received on Thursday, June 23rd. There's another email received from Rebecca Rooney. Hi, Mike, I just wanted to say I thought you and the board did a great job last night, but the questions and concerns about the cannabis regulations, it seemed like a lot of those who spoke up were not in favor of having regulation cannabis in town. I wanted to say I think the regulations you came up with and presented last night were good and sufficient for our town. It's highly unlikely that more than one, maybe two, would come to this town anyway. And I think what you've already done with the regulations is reasonable. Just wanted to share my support. Thanks. And the third comes from a gentleman by the name of Sam. Sam Rooney, hello, just wanted to share my support for the cannabis regulations that presented at PCC meeting this week. I think they're reasonable and hope we can proceed. Those are the the three letters that came in through the town.
Thanks for sharing those. Any, any further comments, Mike, before we?
Not on my end at this point.
How about the commission? Anyone have anything to say, John?
Yeah, one of the citizens who was on the meeting, I think it was Nicholas Tella, was on here tonight as well.
Too, I see him, yeah.
Yeah. He suggested that we should look at some studies to see things like crime rates, et cetera, around retail cannabis locations. So I did, I went searching for as many studies as I could find about it. And what I found was that typically in states where there are cannabis, excuse me, where there are retail cannabis locations, crime goes down in the neighborhood of them. Also, property values go up in the neighborhood of them. It may seem kind of intuitive, but one of the reasons crime goes down is that the police are freeing up resources in order to go after different classes of crime. They're not prosecuting nonviolent drug offenders. A lot of police time.
I'm sorry, what, what studies that based on, John?
I'd have to take a look and find it. Let me see where I saved it.
Because I've been by dispensaries, like out in Vegas and everything, and they were a little shady looking from what I saw, but.
The entirety of Vegas is a little shady looking as far as I'm concerned. Let me pull this up here. All right, so I have a 21, 2021 study, how legalizing recreational marijuana impacts home values. Do you want me to share my screen and show them, or?
No, just like who did the study? It's always interesting to know.
This one was done by a real estate organization.
Okay.
Let me see what if they gave me their actual moniker. Francesca Ortagren, Dr. Francesca Ortagren is the data science and research product management at Clever Real Estate. Former professor at University of Southern Indiana, widely known as a personal finance and real estate expert. Her studies have been featured on a number of acclaimed business news outlets, including Yahoo Finance, CNBC, Business Insider, and Forbes.
All right, thanks, John.
That, that's one of them, and then there's, I have about seven others. I don't know if you want me to go through them all.
Yeah, to go through all of them, I'm just curious. You know, I've always interesting when, you know, who cites things. Any, anything else in the commission? All right, let's open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
It's Nicholas Tella, 49, Earl. Interesting, interesting to hear what he had to say. I mean, I just threw a quick Google up, and first thing that popped up is crime targeting LA cannabis dispensaries hit an all time high in LA. So I mean, you got to be careful who you're looking at today from both sides of the argument. So that's all I had to say.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Got unmuted.
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought I had this down. I want to offer a correction to Mr. D'Amato's memo that was revised on June 2nd, 2022. In the summary, where it says a few other important points to take away from this legislation. First item, that towns that wish to adopt the townwide prohibition must do so via ordinance through their legislative body. Well, that, that's true. But that requires a petition be submitted to the Board of Selectment, signed by 10% of the electors, which in Wellington, that would be 341 signatures. The disadvantage about doing that is any established allowed use will be grandfathered, depending on who acts first, planning and zoning, or the, a successful petition to bring it to referendum. It would be on the ballot in November. So if the effective date of this change or addition to the regulations was November 15th, it would be moot by ordinance. If this is effective before the November election, then any establishment, any use that's allowed by zoning regulations would continue as grandfathered. This, that was one point. So there was also a line in there. Connect a general statutes 21A dash 422F, subparagraph B. Any municipality may, by amendment to such municipality zoning regulations, or by local ordinance, or by local ordinance, prohibit the establishment of a cannabis establishment. So you do have the right to not allow that use in Wellington in the zoning regulations. I just want to make sure that commission is clear on that. My personal opinion, I don't care. I mean, you all do what you, what you think is best. But I know that there's a substantial part of the population of town that's not exactly thrilled by this, and there is an avenue by which they could resist this. So I just want to make that clear. And as far as the last meeting goes, I disagree with the minutes with respect to another application, and that's all I'll say on it. Unless you want to know more.
Nope, not on this, when we nope, I'll, I, I understand, Ralph.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not, not under this public hearing, though.
I understand, understand.
All right, I see someone by the name of M here with a hand up.
Hey, it's Matt Pelletier of 227 River Road. Regarding the cannabis thing and law enforcement, I've seen, I mean, everybody can find a study that supports their argument. However, I reached out to various local law enforcement regarding this, and just to get a local take on it, opinion. They had less than enthusiastic things to say about it from their personal experience, and there's no quantitative, you know, data to prove on this, but this was from multiple people who have over 10 years of experience in law enforcement, and they're quantitative from what I talked to them was that it's less than favorable, and all you're doing is asking for increase in petty crime and other things. And that being said, not that I am entirely, you know, up in arms about it, but I find that the strategic thinking behind this is, yes, it's a raise in tax income, but then the long term strategic thinking with that in mind, are we going to be spending more in the long run versus what the tax dollars are going to be increased from the allowing this in our town?
I think that's hard to answer, Matt. This have to be put under things to consider.
And this is his wife, Marissa, same address. I did a little research myself in the University of Colorado Denver, did a study in 2019. They found that the crime was, let me see, except for murder and auto theft, both types of dispensaries, which would be medical and I guess like every dispensary are associated with statistical significant increases in rates of neighborhood crime and disorder. They cited that it was between 26 and 1,452% higher, this is the crime, than in neighborhoods without commercial marijuana activity. So I was just wondering also if there is to be tax revenue on the dispensaries in our town. Is there going to be money allocated to pay for a resident state trooper? Obviously, it's, we have nothing right now, and we barely have any state trooper as it is at Troop C, since they have to cover multiple towns. So this is a big concern, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from the public? Sarah?
Hi, Sarah Reese Pine, Chris Road. I'm wondering, did you guys ever reach out to Nature's Medicine down in stores? They used to have a dispensary, and I believe they had bars on their windows because people were breaking in. So just wondering if anybody had ever reached out to them to gain any insight on their dispensary?
I don't believe so. Mike, you know anything different than I know?
I'm not aware of that business that.
Remember when it was there, I just don't.
Yeah.
You know, I know we didn't reach out to it.
No, I think it, I mean, those would be under the, not necessarily any different, but it would be a medical, that would have been under the, the medical licensing that was previously approved. It wouldn't have been a retail establishment, I don't believe, but I'm not familiar with it.
It was a medical facility.
Okay.
Can I follow up? I'm sorry. So given that it was a medical facility and not a recreational, do you think it being recreational would cause more issues than it being medical, seeing as how they had bars up at Nature's Medicine to prevent break-ins because they've dealt with them?
That, that's impossible to really comment possibly, you know, there's something in there, people break into liquor stores, you know, you, I suppose it could happen, people, somebody got caught breaking into Lots and More a few days ago and arrested, so.
Right, I get it's hard, but do you guys like think through all the possibilities and scenarios and look at both sides of the aisle that are for or against, and not just information that would fit your own personal beliefs on the matter?
Well, one thing we're doing is listening to the public right now, and that's certainly helping me come to a decision. I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I can speak for myself. It's very helpful for me to hear the public's comments on this.
Thank you, Walter.
Now, thank you.
Also, Sarah, if I could just answer, if I was running a business and I was going to, you know, put in a retail location somewhere with a valuable product that might get stolen, I would put bars on my windows as a precaution before I even opened my doors. I would imagine that if any retail establishment wants to locate itself here, they would be doing the same thing.
Correct. I just wonder like how that would affect the community if crime brings to the business, how would it affect the residents? Do you know what I mean?
The effect would likely be the same as what happened at Lots and More a few days ago. Someone tried to break in and got arrested. There's security cameras, there's alarm systems, there's a host of things people can do to prevent break-ins.
Correct, but I feel there's more. A dispensary would be more targeted, I feel personally, that's my opinion, than a Lots and More. Yeah.
It would.
All right, well, Sarah, I appreciate your comments. Further comments from the public?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, too, but.
All right, here's some talking. You want to make a comment? You're muted. Okay. Further comments from the public? Jamie?
I'm sorry, did you call on me? I, my phone cut out.
Your hand is up.
Oh, yes, please, sorry. My phone cut out right when you were talking, I didn't want to speak out of turn. I'm Jamie Coprek on Common Road.
Okay.
Um, I think what I was wondering is, in the last meeting or the one before that, I was catching up on a few of them. Um, it was said that there would be like well regulated and that they would be, you know, like they would have like the smell reducers and all that stuff. And I'm just wondering, like, who actually is responsible for facilitating those kind of things? Like, who is checking on all of this? Because if it's up to like the PNZ, or is there like another agency that does that? Like, who is checking on that stuff? And how can we be sure as citizens? If that's actually like being done all the time? Because I know, like, there was, it was brought up like that little place that's become like a junk collector next to Dollar General there.
Yeah.
Um, like.
Yep.
Right, well, it just kind of fell by the wayside, and to me, like, it's the first thing people see when they come in town. And if we can't regulate what that is happening, you're not even mowing the lawn.
Well, Jamie, I can make a brief comment on that. They are trying to do something about it, but unfortunately, it's a long process is what I can offer to that, but it certainly hasn't been shot, and I've personally brought that up multiple times. I know Mike has brought him to court. It's just, it's a long process to actually do zoning enforcement, unfortunately.
Well, and I appreciate like that you guys are working on that, but that as a citizen, that there could maybe be a facility like this, if it's a long process and there's something happening that the citizens with a dispensary or a retail store are saying, hey, this is happening. If it's a long process, then that as a citizen scares me to think that we can have, you know, something not be regulated right away or caught up on right away. So I guess that's my biggest concern. It's just like the safety of it and who's actually checking it and responsible. And if you guys even have time to do that, I mean, I'm sure you're busy and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mike, you want to respond a little bit to how that would, that would go down? I know we have the special permit process, there's state regulations with these, but you want to add some color to that, that I can't?
Yeah, so any, there's, there's a, I was just looking through, there's a, obviously, a really, really long list of criteria that they have to meet at the state level. So if there's any issue with a business, and whether that be motor vehicle repair or cannabis, that was operating with a state license, then there is a state agency that would monitor and, and enforce against that. If the commission approved an application for this type of facility, and there was a regulation, or there was a condition of that approval, which they were in violation of, then the town could also take enforcement action. The River Road property is a little bit different because there was no active approval provided by the commission for that person to occupy the facility. So it was not the same type of process. But there, there would be potential overlap between local and state for the licensing of these types of facilities.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Any further comments or questions from the public? All right, one more time, any, any further comments or questions from the public? Okay. Looks like, looks like everyone that had, had a question or comment is, is gone, Mike, so. Going to make a motion to close PZ-22-10.
Whoops.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry about that. PZ-22-9, I want to start like World War III here with that. All right.
I would move that we accept the cannabis regs as written.
First, why don't you vote on closing?
I'm not ready to say right now. I'm trying to close the public hearing.
Okay, sorry.
Second.
All right, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
All right.
Mike, as far as voting on this next meeting?
So it, it's, I guess, I don't know where the commission stands on this.
I want to, I want to, me personally, I want to think about this a little bit. I, I, I take these comments from the public pretty seriously. I read through, I listened to the last meeting that I wasn't at. I just, I really want to think this one through a little more than just making a decision tonight. And I respect what anybody on this commission, how they feel or whatever, but just, I don't think it's going to kill us to wait one more meeting.
I think a little digestion time on this is a good thought.
So can I just, I just, just some food for thought? So the way that the statute is written is that if towns don't adopt regulations that, that take some position, then that's where they have to be treated as, as like uses.
So our choice is then, or we can adopt these regulations. We can we can prohibit cannabis establishments in town, that's another choice. So those are our choices. We can adopt the regulations or we can prohibit.
Right. One of the things I think that we should consider, we can adopt these regulations, but we can change that in any time.
Well, but once, once we have an establishment in town, that they're here, you know, it's
Well, we have, we don't, we don't have anybody, we have no applications.
Well, we did, we did have interest, if you remember right, when we first opened up, there was a gentleman from East Hartford that was very interested, and he spoke, and he held a number of potential licenses, and he was looking for places to cite his, his businesses.
Yep, I understand that, but still, we, since we don't have any applications pending at this particular time, we could put the regulations in, and if we choose in the future, we can change it.
We're going to be talking about this, public hearings closed, and we haven't opened up the other discussion again.
Yep.
Point of order.
All right, thank you, Andy. All right, so we're going to, we're going to, do we agree that move it on to the next meeting as far as voting on this?
I think so.
Sure, it's fine by me, Walter. This is Doug, that's fine by me.
Okay.
Can I just make one quick point?
Go ahead.
Just so that you guys understand, so if you approve the regulations tonight, the next meeting, or even the meeting after that, then we set an effective date, and we're, we're, we're off to the races. If you, if the regulations as written are not approved, that doesn't mean that there is a prohibition. So the, we, we basically, if we don't approve a set of some language, then we don't sort of revert, we, we do revert back essentially to where we started. So we get to a point where we're thinking that we don't want to approve the regulations, which are going to allow for them, then we need to get started on some type of regulation to make it clear that the commission's intent is to prohibit the use, because otherwise we fall back on having to treat them like retail and manufacturing, et cetera. So the only reason I bring that up is because if there's any merit to that discussion, it might not make sense to wait two weeks to at least talk about that.
Okay, we did, we want to talk about this tonight during discussion? So we can move the meeting along?
Sure.
Well, we can't talk about PZ-22-9 during open discussion tonight. What's on the agenda?
We're not going to talk about that, we're going to talk about options.
Well, you guys, so you have the public hearing, you can close the public hearing, you can make a motion to add it to the agenda for discussion. You can't take any public comment, but the commission, because you're within the timeframes, you can make a decision on it tonight, you can discuss it as a group. That's, so, so if you made a motion to add it to the agenda, you'd be well within your, your rights to have a discussion as a group about what the next steps would be.
I'll make a motion to add discussion about these cannabis regulations to item J, staff report and discussion for tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. All right.
Okay. Now, PZ-22-10 is tabled, and it says public hearing postponed until July 19th. One, one just question here, Mike, and we're not obviously getting into the public hearing, why the term tabled versus just postponed? Or tabled has kind of a meaning of its own, and kind of requires the agenda, the commission to bring it back from the table rather than just reopening it like what we did tonight with, with, with the cannabis application. So what, what's the choice of that word, tabled? I, we typically don't use that term.
So yeah, the reason why I, I put it in there as table is, and if you look on, you know, I was looking at a couple of different places when, when you brought it up. It basically could be postponed or put off. It wasn't, there was no motion that was tabled. It was just that the application from the previous meeting was tabled. We had some calls and, and folks come basically try, that are trying to track that application. So I, I just was trying, as you can tell from the way that I modified the agenda, to make it clear to anyone that was interested that there would be no discussion of the application of any kind tonight. But so that, that's where the, that term came from. Like I said, hopefully, we shouldn't need to use it moving forward, but, but I can certainly use something else if it does.
Yeah, just like tabled, and when you read like through like rules of order for meetings, tabled and postponed kind of mean two different things. You know, tabled could mean set aside with no provision from bringing it back at any specific time, yet we say when it's going to come back postponed, so it doesn't really make that much sense to me why, why it's there, but just. just making a, making a comment, that's all, but it, it just seems like an interesting choice of a word. All right. New business, so we have a PZ twenty-two dash nine. So probably didn't really need to move that to staff report and discussion, but pertaining to the regulation of cannabis applicant, you know, application. So we, I, uh, no action tonight on this and we discuss it in staff report discussion?
Should we draw up a, a new set of regs, um, outlawing cannabis retail in town, just so that we have it ready? Um, if we decide that we're not going to adopt the regs that allow cannabis in town, we should have something ready to say and we're going to adopt.
I agree. That was one of the things I wanted to discuss, John. Just, I, I, I want to kind of get a feel for how this commission feels, just and, and see where we're at, that's all.
Personally, I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of doing the regs as we wrote them up. I think cannabis retail is actually, um, better than a liquor store. Liquor stores, liquor often causes violent incidents and drunk driving. Uh, there's not an awful lot of, uh, violence around cannabis establishments, uh, except for what some people are noting is some increased, uh, break-in activity, et cetera.
Well, I've, I'm opposed to them, so I, I don't think it was that hard to tell, but certainly, uh, you know, anybody else on the commission have, have an opinion they want to give? Can I, prior to a vote?
Yeah, I, I think I'm ambivalent, but I was surprised, or not surprised, but interested in how how, how spoken the towns about it. I mean, there, I saw the three letters speaking in favor of it. I didn't hear anybody speaking out in favor of it during the open discussion, but it was, it was quite a bit of negative comments and, uh, uh, yeah, I don't know how to think about crime and I, I do think about, I'm sure, I think that cities are just different animals. I don't think they, like, you can't really use city crime rates and extrapolate them into a rural neighborhood, but I think we do have to admit that the more businesses we have here, the more people are going to come here that have never been here before. And, uh, you know, the planet, uh, P O C D, plant of conservation development puts the law on the highway to sort of minimize or contain the traffic closer to the main arteries as we change that. And, uh, we have different establishments throughout town. I suppose it could, could invite a different set of attention to neighborhoods that never had any before, so.
I, I consider our lack of a state trooper here, a resident state trooper, a weakness when it comes to things like this.
Possibly so.
We, it, it, it's, you know, to get somebody down here, you know, quickly if there was something going on. Depending where it's in town, it could take some time.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, you know, we cite tax revenue, tax revenue, yes, tax revenue is a good thing, but there's also, there's pros and cons and, you know, that you got to think about whenever you think about tax revenue too.
I'm, uh,
and, and yes, liquor stores do bring their own set of issues. John is correct. But marijuana is a drug too, in my opinion, that comes with its own set. It's not magical medicine with, with fairy pixie dust with no bad associated with it.
We're.
You know, it's, it, you know, liquor, yes, we, we know all the known effects. Marijuana, yeah, lately it's been cast in a different light, but you know, our whole adult lives, that, you know, you, you hear things and now all of a sudden, all that, that, that's out the window.
Yep.
And yes, I get the medical use of it for the nausea and everything, for, for cancer patients and so forth, understandable. That's why, you know, but retail establishment, that, that's for recreational use. For recreational use, we're going to be bringing in quite a bit of traffic in. You probably have a lot of UConn students coming over, things like that. And using marijuana doesn't exist in a vacuum, you know, if somebody's using marijuana, nothing says they're not drinking too, you know, it's not, it's not this or that usually, you know, it's so, you know.
I think I made the point. I, I think I made the point in the last meeting, Walter, we've already got a sizable population of college students.
Yep, and we see some of the issues with them every time they set up a checkpoint around sprint, you know, the spring weekends have been toned down for sure, but as somebody that lives near an apartment building, I, I certainly see some of the effect. That, that's full of college kids. Any other thoughts on the commission with this?
I, I just wanted to speak up. I, I see both sides. I'm kind of like Andy, kind of not really sure which way I would want to vote at this time. I do like the idea, Walter, of having, well, if we're, we're not going one way, we need to have the regulations for the opposite side. We should have both as we walk into this. And I, I see the effects of anything near the highway. I, I would be really hesitant to approve anything up near the highway, near both truck stops in FedEx and some of the stuff that could go on with drivers and such up there. That, that kind of makes me a little leery that we can have something with the truck stops up on that end of town as well. My opinion.
Well, thanks for your opinion. That's basically what all our things are, is opinions, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this is Doug. I, I mean, I brought up the concern about the proximity to Troop C. I mean, I know we don't have a, you know, a police, uh, police station or a resident trooper, but that was one of my concerns and I do notice it like some towns like Sturbridge, um, they have a dispensary that is literally right next door to the police station. So I have to think that that has to be a deterrent. So if you did have one on the other side of town closer to UConn, um, it's questionable how, how quick the response, you know, could be or would be. Personally, it's, it's hard because, you know, this, it, the state just flipped up just like that. Up until a few years ago, this was, you know, totally against the law and now it's fine and, you know, everything, every, everything about it is great and wonderful. I don't think people have thought through, um, the effects on society and all that. I had also brought up the comment of what other committees in town, if they've offered an opinion, the edu, the Board of Ed, the Board of Selectmen, um, Economic Development, um, I know I was absent last meeting, but I didn't hear or see anything, um, that they had presented an opinion on.
Well, just, yeah, agreed, Doug, but keep in mind, anybody in town, it's legal in the state of Connecticut.
I know.
So anybody in town that wants to can use it.
Yep, yep, I know.
Not against the law, just, but the, the question is, do we want it sold here? Do we want to attract people in town in the name of tax revenue to come and buy it and, and whatever? Then that's the question.
I got the comment, one of the, I think it was, uh, I might have been Bob last week, uh, last time. And, uh, Mike read some towns are putting a twelve-month moratorium. What's wrong with that? I think there's enough questions, the, the public brought up some excellent questions. We don't know what these facilities, you know, how they are affecting local town crime rates. What's wrong with, a lot of work went into the regulations. I mean, they're well crafted for, for, for what, what they say.
I agree.
What's wrong with waiting? What's, why do we have to make a decision now? Uh, this, these are, this, this is from the commission. This, this is, this is not an applicant, right? This was, uh, this is the commission bringing this to their own commission.
What we, we have to make some sort of a decision, correct, Mike?
Okay, we make a decision to postpone.
Go ahead, Mike, you want to comment?
We, the only thing that we, you risk is that if you have nothing in place, then you, uh, you're subject to an application without the regs. We did have the moratorium in place, which, which expired. Um, the moratorium was for the purposes of the commission going through this process. Could you, could you go through and basically adopt one again? Uh, and say, you know, we want to, we want to have another six-month moratorium or, or something? I, I suppose you could, um, but that would be treated just like a text amendment, so, you know, this, we'd be looking at a thirty-day lag time.
Somebody would have to commit in thirty days real quick and throw an application down.
And there is somebody ready. He was at one of our meetings a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, well, that's, I brought that up. Those are the gentlemen from East Hartford. So can you give us a couple of options for the next meeting, Mike?
Yep.
These, as you're, as written, and probably, uh, something along the lines of prohibiting the establishments?
I, I think you have three options. Option one is approved, if, if folks are concerned about multiple establishments and, but are okay with one, uh, then I think that you can consider, obviously you can always remove a regulation, right? So if you get one application and then you decide you don't like it or there's, or you don't want more, if you remove that use from the regs, it becomes non-conforming and you, we can then prohibit them. Option two is we run a text amendment to essentially add this use to a, a list of prohibited uses, not allowed anywhere in town, period. I think option three is if, um, the commission is concerned about time. I think that the only real option would be to basically approve the regulation as written with pumped up separating distances. So right now we have separating distances of, you know, certain amounts. And I think the other option could be to just blow those out to be much, much greater if you were worried about losing thirty-plus days to root an entirely new text amendment through the process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. Can you, uh, can we have all three options on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah. So I can, the prohibition is fairly simple. It's going to basically be to, to list them as a prohibited use. I think that the reg as written or even the modifications you can do as part of what's there. So, you know, the only thing that I, it would be up to you, but, but I could submit a text amendment to allow these as a prohibited use or to prohibit them, sorry. To cry, I mean, I could submit it tomorrow. We might be able to get it in on time if, if you want me to do that to try to get that public hearing as quickly as possible.
Just, uh, you said, Sandy, uh, you said, uh, it takes thirty days to, so we could, we could remove a regulation at any time. We can also replace regulations. So in theory, we could approve, I'm just, I'm just brainstorming. Theory, we could approve the regulations as they're written. That gives us control for the next thirty days or ninety, whatever you want to say. In the meantime, if we can keep the discussion open, draft a regulation for prohibition, and if that was, if the commission determined that that really was the best course of action, we can then remove one and add the prohibition, correct? And am I wrong about procedurally? Wouldn't that work? Because I hear what you're saying. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't inform what's written, thirty days, it's, 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 anybody can submit anything. There's no call over whatsoever.
I, I just feel that we either vote in favor of, favor of it or we don't.
Yeah, right.
It, it's, it's black and white. It, it's like if
But if we don't, then we have thirty days to come up with a regulation that does offer some control. Because there won't be any for that period of time, a month. It's really, it's really, is somebody really going to come in in a month, I wonder? It's, it's procedurally sort of manipulation, but it is how work gets done, so. I know. But yeah, let's do the three options. Let's keep talking.
All right.
It'll be a busy meeting, that's.
That's all right.
So if, if I can, so I, I just did the date. We're thirty days out today, so, um, it says, so if I can, if I can get it in, the prohibition language, would you want me to include that for commission consideration? Or, um, try to get this on the agenda for an actual hearing if the timing will work as well?
So put it in as an actual hearing just to see what the public thinks about it as a prohibition?
Okay, if I, if I can get it scheduled and get comments back in time for the, for two meetings from now, I'll put it on that agenda as an open public hearing.
We'll certainly see, we'll certainly see if anybody, uh, you know, if a large contingent comes out in favor.
Yeah.
And that, that gives them their chance to come out and state their.
Why isn't a prohibition the other side of the coin for the public hearing that was already open? Why did there, why? I mean, wasn't.
Because we, because we came up with regulations allowing the use. We presented it to the public to get public comment on it.
And that's what, so we didn't have, we didn't come up with regulations.
We didn't give them that option.
Yeah, you're okay. Yeah, I hear you. Okay, that makes sense. But it is the other side of that same thing. So, yeah, okay, I like it. Have another public hearing, you get five hundred people that come out in favor of it and we go, okay.
Well, that certainly tells us something.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Works then, so, yeah, kind of makes sense.
The other thing, the other thing that I'll do is I will, I will confirm with Haller and Sage that if the commission were to deny the text amendment to allow the use, is that effectively a prohibition or, or not? I, I will at least get that answer so we can.
That's a good point, Mike.
That's a good point. Fun.
Okay, so I should be able to have that and an update on a public hearing for that prohibition at the meeting in, in two weeks.
Okay. Well, it was a good discussion. Normally, as, as a commission, we're all pretty much on the same page, at least in my long tenure on it. Little interesting to have a little discourse, but not a bad thing.
It's not going to hurt to hear what more the public has to say.
Certainly not, certainly not.
Are we gonna also have try and put a rule on, so there's the three options, the, any number, a single dispensary only if we choose to adopt these regulations? There's only allowed one in town ever, and then the prohibition, or are we just doing the prohibition or the current regulations? And this part of that discussion or?
Mike?
Um, I could certainly try to provide some additional red line tweaks to show you what it would look like if we wanted to significantly restrict it. The one thing.
The way it's currently written, we could have up to three, correct? You could have a, a, a retail establishment, a hybrid and, and a grow operation, correct?
So the way that it's written now is that you could have, those three are considered retail and they can't, so once one locates, we have the separating distances, so you can't be within a thousand feet of, of any other cannabis establishment.
And then there's a dispensary, correct, that for medical?
That's for any other establishment, so even a grow facility. So we know that we can't just unfortunately cap it. So we can't just say the town of Willington will only approve one. So what we have to do is come up these criteria to basically make it so you can't cite them anywhere. So we can, as I said, really, really pump up those separating distances so that you can, you need to have two thousand feet or three thousand feet in between the uses. The one thing, the only, the only other thing we could really do is, is we could try to dial in the allowed uses so that they were only allowed in one specific zone or another. If the commission's concerned about the highway, you know, there are portions of, um, the, uh, Ruby Road exit, which are industrial, so you could look at those use tables and try to dial it in that way. I can, I can, I can look at that, see, I, I make no promises, but I can give it a shot for the would be two meetings from now, I guess. If that's what you guys, if you think that would be helpful.
I, I'm not so sure that's worth spending that much time on, Mike. What's the rest of the commission think?
I would agree with you, Walter.
You know, the, the, these regulations that as they stand right now, quite a bit of work went into them. So I, I think a pretty good job was done on them. It's just, to me, it's a matter of do you want this or don't you? You know, the rest of it is semantics, like, you know, here that we.
Well, let's go with the, let's go with the prohibition and then get some more input from the public. And uh. Let that be our guide.
Any further comments on this?
I'd really like, like to know what the position of the Board of Selectmen are on this. I mean, they have. They have the ability to say, okay, well, if we're going to take this business because we're approximately to eighty-four and all that. And this is the tax revenue. People have brought up before about having a resident trooper. I mean, will they say, hey, yeah, if this happens. You know, we'll, we'll take this money and we'll, we'll pay for the resident trooper. This is a big thing to impact the residents of our town. It just seems like we shouldn't be operating in a vacuum. Even though that we're basically making rules in line with or against state statutes.
It would be interesting to know what our. Elected leadership of the town thinks on, on the subject. Some of us are elected too, you know, granted, but you know, the people that are the leaders of the town or, or, or Board of Selectmen. All of them, you know, that are on there, you know, so. It'd just be interesting to know how they feel.
So hopefully they read these minutes.
I hope so, because you know, that. That, that would kind of give us a little bit of thought on, on, on what the thinking from, from the top is here.
Right.
I haven't heard anything. Is anybody else?
I haven't.
Okay.
Well, Walter, Mr. Chairman, this is Erica Waschinsky. May I speak?
Yes.
So, so I'm on it. And as is one of our selectmen, selectman Bullock, I wouldn't be comfortable speaking on behalf of the, of the board. It's not a subject that's been taken up, um, nor has it been brought to the table. But I certainly would be open to having a discussion at the Board of Selectmen at one of our next meetings. Um, and invite, you know, any residents to, to share their comments and, um, you know, your commission to hear from us. Be willing to take it up, but it's nothing that's come to our board yet. And this is, you know, it started here, um, last. Meeting with this open discussion. And, and so I think we can move forward with it, but I wouldn't at this point comment on, um, from a board standpoint. Since we have yet to discuss.
All right, that's fair enough, Erica, but I, I think it would be a good thing if it could go on an agenda. Yeah, in my opinion, it's a relatively big decision for the, for the town. And, you know, just be nice to see what the thoughts are from the Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely. We'll, uh, look to put it on, um, one of our, uh, either our next meeting agenda or the first one in August. We'll take a look.
Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, we got a discussion going, so. All right, move on to, uh. Unfinished business. Town of Willington Affordable Housing Plan.
So this has been, um, kind of something that we were working on and then we got started with cannabis and some other stuff. So we kind of push pause just as a quick sort of refresher. The state of Connecticut has required that all towns amend and adopt an affordable housing plan. The first one is due now and then every five years from this point forward, we, the town will need to amend and adopt a new one. So, so the purpose of this is to get one in place as required by state statute. The statute basically dictates that the plan has to. Discuss and, and provide for how the town will increase the, the amount of affordable housing in town.
One second, Mike. Whoever has the mic not muted out there, could you mute it, please? I could hear like a conversation going on, like, thank you.
So, um, basically what we're trying to do is adopt a plan. Um, in compliance with state statute, we decided to put things on hold. Number one, because we were trying to figure out previously what was happening with COVID and, and now with some of this other stuff. So the, the sort of rough draft was, was put out. I sent it to you guys back in May. Um, and the intent here is to get comments from you guys, so we can get it to a point where it seems like it's a good, solid. Working draft so that we can set up a public hearing. Um, so we just want to get it to a point where you feel it's reflective of the discussion that we've had and some of the survey results, et cetera. So we can set it as a public hearing item. I, I would think that given the commission's schedule in the next month or so. We might want to wait, but, um, that's, that's really the, the purpose of things right now.
I, I think we're going to get bogged down pretty heavily in, uh, in, uh, PZ twenty-two-ten. And I, I don't envision PZ twenty-two dash ten getting finished up in one night.
No.
I, I think it's going to be reminiscent of one from long ago that was smaller in scale perhaps and went on for multiple. Evenings.
So, um. We, I guess at this point, if, if the commission has comments that they want to be reflected in the rough draft. We can make those tweaks. And then if not, what I would look to do is schedule a public hearing and start getting the draft. Like, I'll put it on the website and we'll start putting it up so people can provide comments. And we'll tentatively schedule a public hearing for, um, later on in the summer. Once we've kind of cleared the schedule of some of these other pending applications.
Okay, one, one quick question on the regs. The accessory dwelling is, is a right. That, what, does that mean we can't do anything about that? We can't regulate it?
Yeah, so there's another sort of unrelated change to the legislation over the last year was that. The state has said that towns can't, they have to have, um, accessory dwelling units be by right. Which means you can't require a special permit or, or hold a public hearing. And you can't mandate that, that it's only occupied by, um, a, a family member.
That, that single thing is what concerns me the most out of, out of the whole Affordable Housing Plan. Because I know what it's like to have like a house full of college ki- college kids next door. Where we had a drug overdose, uh, up there during that whole like mess. Cops down here like three times a week. Fights in the driveway, the whole shebang. So that, that's what concerns me the most.
Yeah, one, one of the things, my, a couple of things, Mike, and I read through it, uh, today. You know, it's like Walter's comment about the dwelling. And there are several other things about square footage and, uh, switching. You know, this, this town should consider a soil-based, uh, building. Uh, I, I think what needs to be brought forward in this document so that the residents will understand. These things are changes at the state level that we don't have control over anymore. And it goes kind of against the grain, what people are used to, having our regs do here in town. So, I, I, I don't know, how do you address that so that people understand that it's. It's not really our choice about some of these things that we have to take into consideration.
Well, we can certainly make that more clear in, in a, at some point in that document. But the other thing that, that maybe we need to make more clear is that. Approving an affordable housing plan, which talks about accessory dwelling units and soil-based zoning and all those things, alls that does is says. That the town is going to have these discussions. We're not actually approving those policies. So, um, you know, the minimum house size, for example, that's something a lot of towns used to regulate. They'd say in, in a residential zone, the minimum house size is a thousand square feet. That's one of those other changes that we can't. Touch anymore. We, we can't tell someone they can't build a five hundred square foot house. So I can, we can certainly make that more clear in the, in the plan.
Just, so, I mean, I, I understand that this is just putting it out there so that we have this plan. But just with the residents reading it, you know, it'd be nice if they understood that. You know, we're not off the rails with some of these thoughts that have quote unquote been a standard here. Uh, and there's no sense of getting people worked up when it's, it's out of our hands, really.
Okay, we can definitely, um, make that more concise and clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, people need, yeah, people need to understand like exactly what it would look like. You know, rather than like, you know, we're, it, it, it's got to be understand, you know, for instance, Mike, like. But let's just pull a neighborhood out of the air, uh, Clover Springs. Relatively new neighborhood built a few years ago, mostly larger homes. Suppose there was a building lot up there still, or one burned down and somebody wanted to put a fi- a four hundred square foot house there. Could they do it?
Yes.
Okay, that, that'd be interesting, but.
I mean, they would have to meet all the building codes and health codes, et cetera.
Okay. Just that people need to understand that when we talk about it, though. And, you know, I think in principle, everybody would agree with affordable housing of some sort. Obviously, you're going to build a development and you want it to be thousands, twelve hundred square foot ranches or something that are affordable. I, I, I don't see a big deal with that. I don't see a big deal with more senior housing. I don't see a big deal, you know, we, we want people to be able to come to our town and everything. And be able to afford to live here.
Well, I think there's, there's good presentations in the, in the draft that shows different options for build outs. So it's, uh, it's not, I mean, it's, it's made quite clear of what alternatives are. Doesn't, it's not chiseled in stone one particular way.
Well, what, what gets people like thinking like somebody parks a house, call it a tiny house, it says you a trailer with wheels on it with a composting toilet. Sitting, uh, you know, running off a generator. Is that, is that okay?
So the, the accessory dwelling unit, I mean, the, the town has, um, fairly broad discretion. For how you allow them. So you, you would not be, uh, in a position where you have to accept someone who. Is choosing to use some type of a trailer or, or let's say they bought an old coach bus that they wanted to renovate. Those things on chassis and wheels don't fall under that accessory dwelling unit obligation. Unless you actively decided to write a regulation to make it that way.
What about shipping containers, Mike? People like to use shipping containers for stuff like this.
Seen that done, it's interesting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, in, in a couple of the towns that I'm in, we've had questions and people that have been really interested in that. But generally speaking, they have a, have had, at least in the past, and I know there's all kinds of stuff online, but they don't really. Get to a point where they, they meet the building code for things like insulation and all these other things. And so. You know, I'll usually look at that and say, we don't regulate the type of construction, but the building code does. And we hand them off to the building official and. Of the four calls that I've had, no one's called me back a second time. So I don't know what that says, if anything.
All right. All right, we get, we're going to have to get it on, in a public hearing sooner or later, Mike.
So.
August, you think we're going to be through, uh, through the twenty-two-ten in August?
I think if it, if it makes sense to you, I will make some of these changes. We'll, we will basically. Tweak this a little bit. And then what I can do is put it on the website and we can start soliciting just some comments. And maybe put it on the agenda just to get it on people's radar. And then we can push it off just so that people start seeing it. And they start, you know, hearing about it and it'll be on their radar.
Okay. And yeah, hopefully people can look at the materials online and. And, uh, you know, form some good questions for when it goes to public hearing. All right.
Before we move on, what about, um, our favorite, uh, character of around Route seventy-four to Sarah's point, um, that, that seems like nothing's going on there?
Thank you, John. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Character on seventy-four on the corner there?
That, yes, the, the illegal business that, that, that wasn't and still is and. Still old camper piles of junk, you know, the, doesn't look like they're too intimidated yet.
So, you know, I, I, um, I would say two things, both of which I believe are public information. One, um, the, the town filed, um, back in June, basically a motion of contempt with the court. So we need the judge to issue that order and then we are sort of able to. Set into motion, real action to, to start getting things cleaned up. The other thing is, uh, my understanding is that building is in foreclosure. So both of those things are, are active and going through the court system. It's all online. So anybody can see that.
Would that be under the Connecticut Judicial Branch under civil type?
Yep.
It's probably Town of Willington versus somebody.
Well, lucky enough, if you search my last name, it comes up under me. Um, but, yeah.
All right.
If any of you are interested, I can send you the link to that.
Why do you send it? I, I could probably find it on my own, but if you send the link, it'll make it a little quicker.
And if you have the link for the foreclosure suit as well, that'd be interesting. I'd like to see which one's going to finish first.
So, Mike, you want to comment on the digging that's occurring, uh, next to Dunkin' Donuts?
So. I guess what I'll say with that property is that we, for, for a period of time. And, and continue to work with that property owner who is, um, out of state. Or, or not originally from Connecticut. And, um, we've, we've worked with him on some previous violations which were rectified. We're working with him on some other things that are, um, sort of required by the town. Um, so that is ongoing. But, but there is no, there is no connection between the two properties.
No, right, right.
So it's a work in progress.
Okay.
What, what are they digging for? What's, what's this about? First I've heard of this one. I guess I didn't pay close enough attention when I rode by there.
I, I, I don't know that, that.
It's not archaeological, is it?
Yeah, I, I guess I would say it's to be determined.
Looking for gold.
All right, to be determined. So you got to find out what the heck they're doing.
We're working on it, yeah.
All right, maybe Oak Island or something.
Hey, Mike, just an observation on Love's Travel Stop. Um, I, I don't remember, I don't recall the stop sign part of the signage plan. But I can tell you, living east of the construction area, and as I'm going towards the highway. There's been, you know, construction equipment, you know, as needed, um, adjacent to the holster road. You know, in order to, to build the place. Well, now, I think most of that equipment is gone. But they put a stop sign there at Polster Road and oncoming traffic doesn't stop. So for the last twenty years, no one's had a stop sign or, or ever, right? This is kind of a new traffic pattern. I'm not sure if there's some way of like putting a flashing light or something, warning people of the new traffic pattern. Cause I can tell you it caught us all by surprise. It was like, oh, there's a stop sign there. And apparently it's been there and people aren't aware of it.
Okay, I'll take a look at the plan and I'll get in touch with their, their site folks or DOT and.
I have no problem with the stop sign, but I don't know if other people are just, you know, they're not seeing it. Because like I said, there's, there's, oh, there's been a lot of construction equipment in that area. Um, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that. We, we're not at CO with them yet, so we're sort of in that chaos leading up to that. So, so we should be able to get that. So, so we should be able to get that.
Okay.
Why would they have the right to put up a stop sign?
Well, it may have been part of the signage plan, Andy. I ju- I don't recall a stop sign being put there. Um, but it caught us by surprise this week.
They had to do a lot of, um, they were responsible for all the roadway improvements between the site and the ramp. DOT, they're doing that work on behalf of DOT, so they have DOT signage planned, so we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
All right, so that brings us to item G, approval of minutes. We're getting a little out of order tonight. I apologize for that, but so uh, G, approval of minutes, June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Bob, I know you had a request on one of the minutes to be redone. Uh, are they redone to your satisfaction?
Uh, yeah, that correction showed up. Uh, the correction was for uh June seventh and it uh. The, the addition is made on the uh six twenty-one minutes uh and it does list uh what I had requested.
Okay, I, I move that we approve the minutes as written for six twenty-one and uh six seven.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the June seventh minutes are approved.
Can I, can I put down that I have seen? I was not at the June seven meeting, so I'm gonna abstain from this.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, uh, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Well, second.
I'm gonna abstain because I, I, I wasn't in attendance.
Me as well. Doug, I'm, I'm staining.
You wanna call the roll, Walter?
Yeah, who do we have here? We have uh.
Uh, do you wanna say all in favor of this?
Oh, yeah, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, what do we have now? Correspondence.
We don't have any commission correspondence.
All right, public participation for items not in the agenda. So I see you clean that up a little bit and put some. I like your comments, by the way, on the left-hand side. That, that's helpful.
I like that too. I, I, I was wondering if you could add that no decisions are made at the public hearing. I think that might help. Uh, certainly, uh, there's quite a bit of chatter of various things, planning zoning on Facebook. And there's a lot of confusion about, oh, we need to vote on this and, oh, we need to, you know, put a stop to it and that. I think people look, don't understand that the public hearing, we don't make a decision during that, that is strictly for. To hear comments and I, and Mike touched on it, but I wonder if you just strengthen that and say, no decision is made, just so. That's understood. I don't know if it'll be helpful or not, but I, I do, I like the comments a lot. Nice, that's, that's, that's great.
I can, I can tweak that, Andy.
All right, I'm gonna, James Marshall had his hand up first. Hey, James.
Apologies, guys. James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill. Apparently my video is out of whack. Um, so two quick comments. I do appreciate the um. You know, the updated agenda, kinda clarifying, um, who can speak when. I would make, make a suggestion to perhaps uh make the link to meeting materials more visible or more prominent. Uh, for members of the public as well. You might have a little less hunting and picking and um. You know, searching for information um when it is available, although hard sometimes to access. And then the other question I have, if you'll humor me, I know the anticipation is the July nineteenth meeting um is anticipated as a hybrid. As someone who partakes in hybrid meetings, unfortunately, um many times, although I appreciate the opportunity for more people to get involved. Be it a different medium, they do tend to be very tricky logistically um for ease of communication and for um. You know, participants at each of the two, you know, methods of attending um. Really partake in all of the information being presented. So what I'd ask, having just attended the Board of Selectment meeting, um noting that. I suspect it's going to be very challenging, depending on where you hold this meeting, for members in the audience to see. Um, things either displayed by members of the public attending remotely or vice versa. Um, are you guys equipped or thinking about what that hybrid meeting looks like and allowing members, you know. Attending in person to see those speaking remotely and vice versa. So I just wanted to.
Our experience with this commission with a hybrid meeting was, we had one and myself and Mike D'Amato were there. And it was him and I looking up at a TV screen. That, that was our hybrid meeting that we had uh quite some time ago. So Mike, you wanna?
Yeah, my, my concern is, my concern is just with the increased awareness and interest on this, that it could very easily become a mana- un- hard to hear or unmanageable.
I expect a room full of people and uh, and stuff going on online too. So Mike, you wanna comment on how we're gonna? Kind of navigate that or at least what the plan is gonna be technically for technology and so forth?
Yeah, um, so right now, we're sort of looking at which. Which of the various locations might have the best ability to accommodate that um and, and gonna try to set it up so that. Things that are being shared are being done in such a way that if someone is only attending in, you know, with one format, obviously they're, they're not. Discounted from seeing that. This is the challenge with the hybrid meeting. And, and that's why we had originally thought of doing this just virtual, cause at least then we can make sure everybody's on the same page. But to try to accommodate some of the requests, I'm gonna see if we can kinda implement some additional technology and, and. We're gonna just basically do our best to try to make sure everybody's um able to share in all the information.
Well, that's what it's gonna come down to. We have to let people be heard and do it in, in an efficient manner. So that, that, that's gonna be the challenge and uh, you know, I, I, and I. Think from a lot of the comments I saw, the public wants us to have in person, which I, I personally agree with. But you know, it's gonna be hybrid, cause that's what the state says we have to do, so.
Yep, I, and I appreciate it. I just, you know.
All right, well, we appreciate your.
To the greatest extent.
Comment and, and your experience with these and the challenges, so. All right, Mr. Tullis.
Ah, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. Couple of things. Um, I did check online. Rebecca is listed as a full member. Uh, under the uh commission's webpage, so no worries there. Um. What else was I gonna bring up? Oh, I, I commented at the Board of Selectments meeting tonight about the hybrid meetings. I, I, as much as I'd rather have it a hundred percent in person, that may not be a reality. And the problem is the audio. Uh, there's three members on the Board of Selectmen. One, I can hear very well. Uh, the second, I can hear most of it, and the third, I can hear about half. And it has to do with the technology in the room where they were meeting. I, I just don't, uh, I, I'd rather see it fully, uh, fully uh online. I, I, I think it's clearer for everybody. Uh, at least from my perspective, I did once uh SBC meeting, hybrid. I was in person. Uh, it's awkward. It's, it really is awkward. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I'm not gonna get too specific, but if the audio of a meeting says one thing. And the minutes say something completely different, that's just not cool, guys. Um, it, it changes a lot of things with an application, so please. Pay attention to the audio, the vi- the video that's online. The minutes do not reflect what happened, and that's just not good. And that's all.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Nick Tella.
Hey, it's Nick Tella, forty-nine Merle. Um, so first, I love how you guys handled tonight's meeting. It was awesome, uh, especially reaching out the. Board of Selectmen. Um, wrote down some stuff here. So I would like to say, uh, material divided on the agenda. Uh, it comes from, I may be saying the company's wrong, uh Tyke Planning and Policy Group. Um, so just a little concern that's coming from this company and not from uh the town's one drive and stuff. And also, let's see, so when I assess them. What's the setup to make sure these files don't get lost, uh, if this company was not associated with us anymore? And then, all right, so next thing here is uh like to voice concern in having a town contractor instead of a town employee. As a zoning agent, especially when they live not even close to this area. Uh, and the education was specialized in city slash urban planning in their bachelor program. And also in their postgraduate program, it was city slash urban planning, not anything to do with rural. So, uh, let's see here. So I hope the board uh ends up seeking someone that specializes in rural planning instead of city slash urban planning as a town employee. And not as a contractor to guide Wellington to preserving this town and making sure big money does not turn this place into. A parking lot for tractor trailers and a place for warehouses. Maybe put a four, well, this came tonight with affordable housing. Maybe put affordable housing in that zone already. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicholas. Jamie?
Hi there, uh, Jamie Co-Prop, Common Road. Um, so uh, we're fairly new to town and I apologize if this isn't the right place. To, I'm fairly new to all of this, so please feel free to tell me if this is not the right place, but um.
You can't talk about tonight. I'll, I'll just put it out there before you start. Is anything on the agenda tonight? That, that's.
I, I understood. Thank you. I promise I won't. Thank you. Um, so, um, we moved our family here and I'm just wondering, like, it seems like the things that I won't mention that are on the agenda. Are very targeted to specific audiences and I'm just wondering, um. Like if anything's being done to make our town a little bit more um family friendly, like we, we literally have to go to Stafford for everything. They have a lot of really cute small businesses that really support the community and personally, I'd rather keep my family here and spend the money in our own town. Um, and I wouldn't even be willing to help. And I think a lot of the um families we've been, you know, blessed enough to meet. That have small kids in the school, they all wanna move and it's kinda disheartening, cause we just moved here. Um, and I'm just not sure, like, if, is there anything being done to try to maybe incentivize like. An ice cream shop or a splash pad or something fun that we can spend our money in town with our kids instead of having to leave the town to do those things?
You know, some of the places to look, Jamie, would be like, you know, there, you got Hall Pond for the summer, you have the River Road Recreation Area. You have a Parks and Rec Department here in town. So looking at some of the things that they offer, you know, a lot of them are pretty family friendly things. A lot of us have raised families here in town, you know, even members of this commission and so forth. You know, my kids are a little older now, but you know, I remember when they were young, there were quite a few opportunities around and. You know, like an ice cream shop, we used to have one, believe it or not, right in the uh Phelps Plaza, but unfortunately it went out of business, so. Just, you know, there, there are things out there and obviously, you know, if a business came in before us and wanted to locate, you know, something that was family oriented. We certainly give it the same consideration we, we give anything else.
So that, so that's pretty much how it works. Like the company has to approach the town, like we can't do anything to.
Well, generally, because an ice cream shop is not, uh, some, just using that as an example, is normally a small business. Somebody's gonna invest probably some of their life savings into that, you know, they come before us and. You know, for our part, you know, we try to make the process as painless as possible for them.
Right.
Still up to them to figure out how they're gonna make money and everything and, and attract business, you know, we, we, we don't do that part for them.
And we do all the things. It, the park may or may not have something that shall remain nameless during this meeting across the street from it now. Um, you know, that's upsetting to me. Um, and, and they're really like, we, there's a parade in Stafford, there's Christmas stuff in Stafford. There's, um, they closed down Main Street for everything, cause all of those small businesses do that to support the community. And I just don't even think places are looking here. And like I said, it's not because I'm, don't wanna drive. It's just that I'd rather support our own community. And we, we did join Hall Pond, so thank you for that. It was, it, my kids love it there. Um, and do that kinda thing, but I just wish there was more to keep families here, cause it seems like the targets are just um for specific people. We're trying to bring into town rather than supporting the citizens in the town to want to stay in our town to spend our money, so that's all.
That's great, great feedback, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ralph.
And I, I'd like to respond to uh Jamie's concerns. Uh, as, as a third generation Wellington person, uh, I watched Phelps. Store move from the other side of the tracks to the plaza. Uh, when that store opened shortly afterwards, we had a drugstore. We had a restaurant, ice cream shop on the other end of the plaza. The problem is that the people who live here do not adequately support the businesses that try to start here. Uh, this is why Phelps went down. This is why McCormick's went down. There wasn't enough business to keep the doors open. So, uh, part of the reason we don't have those things is that the people who live here don't support them adequately. Uh, and maybe their business plan was faulty. I don't know. I, I don't, I, I never see the books. It's just my observation over my uh, uh, few decades in this town that uh, uh, this is what I see. And, and it's, uh, uh, until the people who live here can frequently shop. And patronize these businesses, um, they may not last. That's just the way it is. It, it's all economics.
All right, thanks for the comment, Ralph. Any further comments from the public?
Walter, can I just jump in? The one thing I just, uh, since we have a larger audience than typically is. The commission did not long ago pass the South Wellington Village Zone for this, in, in those regulations for the express purpose of encouraging. Small-scale village-based businesses and, and basically fix that whole zoning scheme down there. For, for a lot of what we're talking about here. So, you know, we, that you guys did that sort of proactively to try to encourage some of those things. Cause I, I think that's a lot of what we've talked about trying to make happen here.
All right, yeah. That was a good one to bring up, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, Jamie, your hand is still up. Are you done? Do you have anything else or you, you're done?
I'm done. I'm sorry. I don't know why it's still up.
No, that's okay.
See, I told you I'm new at this.
That's all right. All right, so uh staff report and discussion. Item A, July nineteenth, hybrid meeting reminder. I think we had a good little discussion about that and hopefully it flows smoothly.
Uh, hey, I, I have one comment. Um, I know what uh. Like, like, when, when they do it at work and you're helping with this too, they'll often have a mediator or rather a, a sort of a, of somebody that's monitoring the online. Business. Well, you're gonna be very busy. If there's an in-person meeting, there's gonna be a lot of people for you to be looking at. Would it be helpful to have someone monitoring whose hand is up on the uh, you know, on the, on the chat side? For lack of a better term. Um, or do you, do you feel confident that you can, you know, there might be hundreds of people?
But well, here, here's, here's where it's gonna get a little tricky, okay? I'm, I'm on vacation that week. But I, but I plan, I plan on attending the meeting.
Okay.
I may be sitting on a boat over in Block Island or something with a laptop with me and. And stuff going on in the background, but the uh, I, I'm certainly gonna try. So I guess my question is, Mike. How, how do the rules work? Is if, like, say John was the chairman that night and I was just a, a, a member of the commission. Can we do that?
Sure. I, yeah, I think that, that probably would be a good idea and. You know, obviously, uh, I, I've done a couple of different hybrid formats and we'll, we'll come up with. Once we have the tech situated, sort of the process and, and generally the way that it works is, is you hear from people that, you know, we'll talk to anybody who's in the room first. And we'll let them provide comments and then we'll go to the people that are on the fu- you know, on the computer. And, you know, I can certainly assist with, with pointing out who's doing what, so that the chairman, whoever that person is, can focus on the person. Speaking at the time.
And, and you know, I certainly wanna participate. I don't wanna not attend this meeting if I have the capability to do it. I, I, I think it's important, like, as, as many of us can be there. To hear this, this whole application and so forth, you know, and, and be able to. Speak intelligently about it, ask questions, you know, hear the public.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, I'll be chairing the next meeting in person.
If, if you, if you, if you, if you agree to that, John.
Sure.
Okay. I, I, I think it would go easier if you were sitting there though and doing it rather than me like on, on a screen trying to do it. I think that might be. Kind of a, I don't wanna use a, a bad word, but it'd be a kind of an S show. Let's put it that way. I think that might be kind of a, I don't want to use a, a bad word, but it'd be a kind of an S show. Let's put it that way.
I'm going to try to attend that uh, next meeting in person.
Where, where is, where's it being held?
I don't think they have that nailed down yet.
We're trying to figure out with technology and capacity. Even, we're going to shoot, the first option would be upstairs in the bigger room at Town Hall, but you know, even that isn't that big of a room. So we're hoping to have that nailed down in the next couple of days.
But yeah, I'll make a commitment that as long as I'm in town or, or available, I'll show up in person for these meetings. It's just, that's not going to work for the nineteenth, unfortunately. Alright, River Road Project Community Forum update.
So I just wanted to put this on here again because, you know, there's a lot of people following this application. Pr- prior to the last meeting, um, there were a number of concerns expressed by residents to either our office or to um, for Select Woman's Office. And, and some of these concerns aren't necessarily related to the zone change specifically. And so we had originally tried to coordinate with the Economic Development Commission to have a community forum sort of through their board, which um, we sort of they agreed to host and there was going to be this community forum to have this discussion and the EDC is, is not uh, comfortable or willing to have that meeting at this point. So, um, we're working to just basically get the developer to commit to having it. Um, he's trying to find or they, whoever is trying to find a venue in town to do that. Um, there's a couple they're working on, but right now, um, they have committed to having that on July thirteenth. So I just wanted to put that on the agenda so anybody listening would know that on July thirteenth, there will be a community forum. Um, it's to address some of those concerns.
What's the point of that? Aren't they supposed to give us their sales job during the public hearing?
So the purpose of this meeting is really to respond to, to, to provide an avenue for them to respond to some of the concerns that came into Town Hall unrelated to specifically the zone change application.
Okay, but, but, but the very fact they put up that thirty percent plan or whatever you want to call it there, that giant like plan? Did they kind of like tell us kind of what they're thinking right then and there? It's more than just a zone change. They want to, that they're doing the zone change so they could do that.
So I think that, that what started this whole thing is that there were some concerns raised by, by someone who was, I think formerly part of that application team who was doing some boots on the ground.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that didn't go over too well. I saw lots of comments on that, like on social media sites and.
Right. So, so the, the purpose of having the community meeting is so that these people can respond to the residents and, and talk about those things that again, aren't related to a zone change.
So they want to do damage control because they sent their guy out and he went, and he went like rogue on them.
So I, I don't think it's damage control because it was something that was sort of requested essentially by, by the town. Um, it's, if, so it's, it's not really something that, that is they, they've said, oh, you know, we want to hold this. We're trying to put them in a position where if a resident brings up a concern, it's not germane to a zone change application. They're going to come to P and Z and that's, it's not part of this application. They say I have concerns about so and so. It's not really part of a zone change, but we don't, but we're trying to provide a place for them to have that discussion. Um, and so the applicant came in and met and uh, spoke with myself and, and Erica about sort of how to best respond to this and, and that was the, the solution.
Does, does that cause any conflict with ex parte communication? Since we do have an item on the agenda, specific to this?
So one of the things that, that we've talked about with them is, and they have a plan for how to introduce the content of that meeting with this board, but it will be happening before the public hearing is open.
What does like say somebody like say our land, uh, our, our, our land use attorney think of this?
Right, I'm curious.
It just seems a little like, you know, we have a public hearing that's, well, let's, let's call it uh, tabled or postponed. I, I consider it like it was, it, it was simply, you know, postponed until July nineteenth. Uh, to have like discussion about things that could be on that, like outside of the format of the public hearing? How does that work? What, what, we got a legal like mind to weigh in on this just to see what they think?
We, I mean, we can certainly talk to them, you know, there's nothing that precludes anybody from talking to another board or commission. If one of the members of this commission attends that meeting, then you need to make that apparent from, um, during the public hearing. But for, you know, from my perspective, we're trying to be responsive to the concerns and the request, requests and the questions from everybody in town. It makes no difference to, to this body whether that meeting happens. So it, it, you know, we have a lot of people that are interested and a lot of people that want to talk about things that aren't germane to the application. And we're trying to make sure that they have an opportunity to do that. If, if you want me to convey to, to the applicant, to the first select woman that the PCC doesn't think that app, that meeting should occur.
Mike, define that germane to the application.
So if somebody wants to show up and, and talk about somebody showing, somebody coming and knocking on their door, for example, and talk with the developer about that process. Number one, a public hearing with P and Z does not involve a back and forth dialogue. It involves a, a member of the public saying, I have concerns because this happened to me. And the, the commission then says, thank you for your comment, next. If we want to have a dialogue where someone can actually say, okay, I, I hear what you're saying. This is what we decided or this is what we didn't do or whatever, that conversation cannot happen during a PCC public hearing. And if, and this commission has to make its decision on an application based upon that public hearing and the content within it. So, a public outreach and someone going to someone's house is not, is not part of a zone change. So we're trying to provide an outlet for a resident to actually be able to engage with an applicant rather than just talk to the commission.
But I'm, I'm just thinking that somebody's going to bring up, what, what about truck trailer? How many trucks are going to come in there instead? Is the applicant going to say, I can't speak about that? Sorry, I can't talk about it. That's going to get kind of weird.
No, I, I'm not the applicant, but I, but I think that what the plan would be is to, to go through that meeting and then provide all the information that came up related to that, for example, to the PCC.
Well, I want to know what a land use attorney had to say about this one, that's all.
I'm imagining Mark Brants in my head.
And because it's going to be very hard to contain what's being said.
Well, because it's not part of a public hearing, there, there's nothing that would prevent them from.
I suppose, right. I guess if a bunch of people meet in Wellington Pizza and talk about it, that's their business. They could say on these.
But in the official capacity, like if it's sanctioned by the town, that, that, that that's where my questions come in.
There's no, this is just going to be a meeting hosted by them. It's not part of any, it's not part of any agenda of any board or commission.
Okay, nobody from Planning and Zoning better agree to that. Alright, Mike, uh, you have something to say, Bob?
No, no.
Okay. Mike, I, I, I see hands up here, but we're past public participation.
I, I guess the commission can make it.
Well, I can make it, I can make a decision here. I'm just saying like, you know, this, we can't talk about like this, this upcoming public hearing. That's what I, I want to make real clear before I take any of these questions. So I guess I'll give it a go and see, see how these things uh, go. James Marshall?
Hi, thank you, everybody. Uh, James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill again. Um, again, I just want to echo the concerns that, you know, I hear expressed now. This is, uh, it's an open item before the zoning board. People were unable to speak about some of these concerns at the last meeting because it was considered on the agenda and part of that item. It seems very inappropriate, um, you know, as part of a PR effort being pushed by either the um, Economic Development Commission or the Board of Selectmen, um, trying to get down this. I mean, it, it admittedly right before this at the Board of Selectmen meeting, we had miss, uh, the first selectmen speak that this expected to be brought up at the zoning meeting on the nineteenth and made no mention when people questioned about this. And it was, uh, discussed directly that this was for consideration, um, as a separate item or that these background conversations that happened. So it's a little disingenuous and I just, I, I think it's inappropriate. Thank you.
Ralph?
If I could just comment on that, this PC twenty-two dash ten was never opened, so it's not an open item.
It was, you had an item on the agenda and postponed again today for nobody to comment on. And we can have a separate meeting and background discussions and propose through the EDC, even though they didn't want to take it up as, as special hearing. It just, it, it seems quite ridiculous.
Alright, thank, thank you, James. Alright, Ralph?
Uh, I'll pass it on to Nick first and anyone else?
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
At Nick forty-nine, uh, so I'm just, please explain, I wrote down, please explain when you said requested by the town. Because it seems like the town requested this guy to go door to door, if I'm misunderstanding.
That, that's.
Okay, I just look for clarification on that when that was said. Thank you.
Hey folks, I gotta step out of this meeting. I'm sorry, I have a call with the fire department.
Alright, go ahead. Alright, Ralph, you then Erica. No, I think Sarah might have been up. I think you're next, Ralph, then Sarah, then Erica. Go ahead, Ralph.
Okay, um. If, if there's an item on the agenda that no one can speak about, that's fine. I get that. I understand why that is. I think you're treading on thin ice here by having any kind of conversation uh, about a get together from an applicant and the townspeople. The townspeople are going to get the wrong impression. They're going to feel that a lot of their concerns will be related to planning and zoning. And it's not being heard by planning and zoning, therefore, planning and zoning will never hear those comments. And those people may never show up at a public hearing. I, I, I think it's very dangerous. And I second Walter's thoughts on asking for legal advice as to whether or not this is appropriate. If the applicant had, if an applicant does this prior to applying, totally different story. I wouldn't be here speaking about it, but that's not the case. So get some advice and move on from there.
Thanks, Ralph. Sarah?
Thanks, Walter. Mike, can I ask you for clarification or is that not allowed right now?
On what?
Um, he said the next meeting for public relation, or whatever you called it, for us to address concerns. Would, would it be an open dialogue or they're just going to speak their piece and we're not able to?
You, the, the one the development company's running? I, I would have to think that would be an open dialogue. I, I, I'm not attending it obviously, but you know, that would be the whole point of something like that, to have a back and forth. Because it would, it would be pretty useless otherwise, but that's, I, I'm not condoning it. I'm not saying anything like that. But I, I, I have to believe it would be open dialogue.
Okay.
Alright.
Also, I'm wondering why it's, sorry, John, also I'm wondering why it's being pushed to a different agenda when it is a public and zoning issue now. And why it's not being addressed by public or planning and zoning. I apologize, I'm tired. Planning and zoning.
We can't comment on that, that one tonight. We, we, I know we have a public hearing coming up July nineteenth and that's when we're going to do our thing. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Walter. I appreciate it.
Alright, you have a good night. Erica?
You too. Uh, thanks, Walter. I, I just want to be clear, um, when uh, Mike said we had asked them to address, I, I had asked uh, an individual to address something at a planning and zoning meeting. Um, that occurred with door to door, um, knocking, did not encourage any other meeting. And when that didn't happen last week, tried to um, encourage there to be a dialogue because there seemed to be a need in town. So my only uh, input was um, in investigating a concern that residents had. And then um, was reassured that that would be addressed. So I'm still hoping the next time this topic comes to planning and zoning, that it is still a, addressed by that applicant. Whether there is a meeting um, completely separate from this board or commission, I anticipate that to, to be addressed. So I just want to be clear, um, that my communications with Mike were in addressing the specific instance that didn't have anything to do um, directly with the application. Um, but some door to door knocking by an individual and asking for that to be addressed. And so I still hope that will be addressed at this, not by necessarily by your commission, um, but by the individuals um, when they come before this commission.
Alright, thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Ralph, your hand's still up on, because you have something to say? No? Okay, I see, but he put his finger up. Okay.
I, I, I haven't got this unmute thing down to, to a science because I like to keep it muted when I'm just listening. There's a guidance letter that um, your uh, land use attorney firm has. It's an outline for hearings. And when, when you have member of the public asking questions about specific issues associated with an application. You, that, that can garner or instigate a two-way conversation with that person if it's of a tech, technical nature. Um. I, I think this is why I, I would encourage you to get some advice from uh, your land use attorney to see how, uh, not, not this other thing about a public meeting somewhere uh, not associated with planning and zoning, but how a public hearing is conducted. Because I think there are situations where a two-way conversation with a, with a person speaking on technical matters is permissible. So.
In, in the, in the context of the public hearing, correct?
Yes, in the context of the public hearing, yes.
Alright.
Because when you're speaking on technical issues, not, there are laypeople that do have the technical expertise to address particular topics, uh, germane to the application. And I think that can generate a two-way conversation and I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
This has been a part of our public hearings as long as I can remember, where you have somebody that's, for instance, an engineer saying something to their engineer. It, 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 it's nothing new. Nothing new.
But it's not, it's not simply a case, the commission, the people speak and the commission listens and that's it. I, I don't think it always works that way.
No, there's back and forth with the, with the applicant and so forth. And the applicants, uh, a lot of times they'll bring their engineer, they'll bring like Fuss and O'Neil with them, or they'll bring their lawyer. Or they'll bring, you know, somebody else and there, there's always a two-way. Normally what we do, we try to moderate the conversation so it's not a free for all. You give them a chance to respond after there's a few questions or something, so it's not a, just a mess, but.
I agree, I agree. Well, my, I was speaking more towards just Joe Public, if you will. Um, people who live here, uh, there's a variety of, of technical expertise out there that I think can sometimes generate a two-way conversation with, with the applicant through the commission.
Well, as, as long.
Questions to the applicant. You always ask questions direct to the commission.
But as, as long as it's pertinent to the application, that, 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 you know, that usually fits in. Alright, I, I get it, Ralph. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, James Marshall?
Yep. Hi guys, thanks again. James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill, um, for future reference. I have to say that every time, if I've been witnessed once.
Technically, yes, but I, I think we realize who you are at this point.
I appreciate it. Um, no, I just want to say thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns, um, related to this, you know, in all honesty. I, I, I do question why this was brought up, um, about a subsequent, you know, discussion by the applicant in another forum or hearing as part of the zoning commission.
I think Erica kind of said with, 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 with her mind, it was the concerns about somebody showing up to people's houses, I think, is what it's supposed to be about. Hopefully it sticks to that.
Yeah, that, again, I would just argue that because that's not what was portrayed at the last zoning hearing meeting. Um, you know, the expectation was they wanted to speak before the Economic Development Commission, you know, one can only imagine. But at no point in that conversation. before the Economic Development Commission, you know, one can only imagine, but at no point in that conversation at the last meeting was it noted that it was in reference to this. So I just question the, the motive, so, but again, thank you all for, uh, for listening to us all tonight.
Thank you for your, uh, comments and so forth tonight, James. Alright. Anything else, Mike? Alright, anything else from any commissioners before we adjourn? Alright.
Motion to return.
Alright, I'll second. Meeting, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I, everyone?
It's, uh, let's see, it's night 21, meeting adjourned.